Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Sayre if he'd lead us in prayer.
Lord, we just thank you for this day, for this freedom that we have in this country, and help us to understand that these freedoms that we have, a cost was involved, and lives were lost and blood was shed for these freedoms, and may we never forget that. And Lord, we just pray for our emergency services here locally, our EMS, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department. We just pray, Lord, for protection for these guys. And Lord, we just pray that for our soldiers across the land, that you would be with these and protect them. And, Lord, be with us tonight and help us to make the best decisions for all the people of Hart County. In the name of prayer, amen.
Amen. This time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We've got a few more items on the agenda, but it should be a relatively quick meeting. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda. I know we have some amendments.
I'd like to add, Ms. Anna Strickland, to give you a brief update under invited guests on the jail study we haven't done. And under old business for B, yearly resolution we have to do for the solid waste fund to get reimbursement from the state on all hip-offs at the cost of maintaining landfill.
All right. With those changes, can I get a motion that we approve the agenda as amended?
I make that motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayre. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approve minutes of the previous meetings. You've got the August 27th, 2019 minutes in your packet. Can I get a motion that we approve?
I make a motion.
If there's no changes.
I make a motion that we approve, 8/27, 19 minutes.
I'll give a second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley and a second by Commissioner Carter that we approve the minutes of the August 27th meeting. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is remarks by invited guest committees and authorities. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Anna Strickland. If she'll come forward and give us an update on the jail.
Yes. There's a few items I'd like to give an update on, but it will be brief. But thank you all for having me on such short notice. I'm typically in class, but class was canceled, so I'm really thrilled in many ways to be here with you all instead. So, thank you for that. A few updates real quickly. So, we did hear back from the College of Engineering, and they will be sending a student team, it's seniors, working on their senior capstone project, and they'll be working on that jail site feasibility study. So, they'll be making a visit to our community by the end of the month, and we'll keep you in the loop about when they will be here, so what that process looks like. They'll have that initial visit with you all, and then they'll present a midpoint presentation around December, and then present their final recommendations in May. So, just to give you a timeline of how that works. And we're also excited to report that we have a Masters of Public Administration student team tag teaming the cost analysis for the jail. So, that's something that stay tuned, because the students are ramping up with their schoolwork this semester, and we'll probably be meeting locally and have the students come in. That's a key part of what we do. Yes, you have tools to make decisions, but we really want to get those students' real-world learning experiences, and many of them have never been to Hart County or Northeast Georgia for that matter. So, we're thrilled for them to come and show Hart County off. Along with that, you all are aware that Hart County was chosen as one of the two pilot communities for the Vice President for Public Service and Outreach's Cyber Arch Initiative. So, we are excited that we will be hosting a cybersecurity workshop training on October 11th. And so, really, the entire community is invited to that. The first, it'll be limited to the first 50 people who register. It's free. Lunch is provided. But really, the curriculum and the workshop is targeted toward city employees, county employees, school system employees, small business owners, or, you know, your industrial and your manufacturing sector, especially the HR folks with that, anybody who's an end user at a computer. So, we want to get that on your radar. And, like I said, registration is open, so if you want more information on that, I'll be happy to pass it along. And then, a final project, just to get this on your radar for this fall. So, Archway doesn't always partner with higher ed, with UGA, for everything that we do. That's A-OK. But that's kind of my role, is to be a resource connector, something that we're really excited about. Our health and wellness subgroup that Archway helps facilitate will be partnering with MedLink to offer a mental health first aid training on October 15th for law enforcement, emergency responders. That was something that was really important for the group, to give everyone that opportunity. And what's exciting about that is that CEUs will be offered, and then a certification will also be offered that's valid for up to three years. So, I wanted to get those four items on your radar for this fall, and of course, I'll be coming back to provide other updates as we have them.
Where will that training be about?
I probably should give you more detail, shouldn't I? So, the Cyber Arch training, that workshop, that will be at the Ag Center, and that will be from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. That's an early start. And then, the mental health first aid training, that'll be at our adult learning center. And that'll be from 8:30 to 5:00. They said we rarely, you know, keep folks until 5:00, and they're completely understanding of the fact that the people who attend are very busy and will probably be coming in and out. They're A-OK.
What all the mental health training cover?
Yes. So, that's certainly not my area of expertise, but I have literature and a flyer on everything that they cover. But I know that participants walk away with a five-step process that they cover in the event of an emergency with someone, and they go through that process and learn that. But I do, I have literature flyers on the Cyber Arch Summit, the Cyber Security Summit, and I have the registration forms and the literature of everything that will be covered for that mental health first aid training provided by MedLink. They've been an excellent partner.
Do you have that with you?
I sure do.
I'd like to have.
I'll go ahead and put one in y'all's boxes. It's a lot of paper. I didn't want to throw paper at y'all, but I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
One request. When we start talking about the jail, if we have any meetings, if those meetings be in the evenings after 6:00, so that we can all attend. It's hard for everybody to get there during the day. So, we'd definitely like to request that.
Okay.
And give us as much notice as possible.
Certainly. We can do that. And the student team, they typically need to be back by 5:00, but I'll be happy to come and meet with you after the fact.
Okay. Anything else?
But I'll do my best to get them after 6:00 if at all possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay. Moving on down the agenda, reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon?
Right, Mr. Chairman. I think what I have is on the way business.
County administrators' report?
I have nothing tonight. I'll be doing over the budget under the agenda.
Chairman's report, August financial dashboard review. Let's take a look at that.
Let's look at, I updated that today. We got our TAVT tax money in.
I noticed it was zero down here.
So, I put that back in. So, I'm going to put the new one up on the screen.
Okay. And that's all the things that changed, right?
No, nothing else has changed, other than the total revenue.
Wow.
I knew it was the largest one we got so far.
Good news. So, looking at our financial dashboard, our revenues and expenditures per month are $1,22,170. We'll take a quick snapshot at it. Our actual revenues for August, which is the 11th month of our fiscal year, was $597,783 against the target of $1,22,170. We expected that to be a miss, and that's why it's red, and that's due to property taxes coming in heavy in October, November, and December when they were due. Actual expenses came in under budget at $914,178. And our delta between the revenues and expenses is $890,000 and some change. I'm not going to try to do the math in my head. So, looking on down, right now, we're still positive with revenues over expenses, and we'll look at our key revenue drivers. A real property taxes, real property, it's red, and again, that goes back to the collections being in November, December, and January. LOST, again, another record that I don't remember seeing us get $246,000 a month in LOST or SPOLOST. I mean, the revenue splitting is, percentages are different, but you can see that's continuing to go up. EMS fees came in at $110,107. Again, another big month for it as well. And vehicle title fee against a target of $56,000 came in at $90,000. Again, just goes to show how, what kind of vibrant economy we have here, and people are buying a lot of cars for that to be that high. So, it's almost double our budget line up. Anybody have any questions over the financial dashboard? We're heading into the last month of the fiscal year in a very solid position with roughly $900,000 of revenue exceeding its expenditures. So, very solid year again. I want to commend my colleagues on the board, as well as our county administrator and department heads for taking care of the county's tax money. So, good job so far. Let's keep it going. Any questions on the financial dashboard? I have had a couple of inquiries. I don't want to rub any salt in any wounds, but I feel like it's appropriate that we report this out. And this goes back to the Bowersville situation and the speed bumps. If the county has reimbursed, Bowersville, no, the county has not. And I just want to say that, and just leave it at that. Moving forward with commissioners' reports, District 1.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
District 2.
Nothing at this time.
District 3.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
District 4.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Moving on into old business, item 12A, addendum to FY '20 Legacy Link Agreement. You've got that in your packet. Can I get a motion that we approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Teasley that we approve the amendment, the addendum to the agreement for FY '20. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the one we amended, the resolution for the solid waste so that we can get reimbursed. Going to get a motion that we approve this resolution?
I make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Have a motion by, he was louder.
He's louder.
Commissioner Sayre and a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Moving into new business, item 13, item 13A, we've got a request from the sheriff's office to give credit for experience, which is along our, and in line with our policy.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
This is to give credit for four years for a deputy that has been hired and could make that retroactive to the hire date.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a paper.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Teasley?
I bet you I tell more.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. What does that last sentence mean? This will only affect pay grade longevity and not benefit time from the new hire.
Correct. New hire standard starts off at the beginning for the benefits, the vacation time, PTO time, all that. That remains the same. All four years of effect is just the pay grade itself, just the hour.
Pay grade will go up, or pay scale will go up?
Pay scale will go up. The benefit stays the same. Correct.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item 13B, summary request, credit for experience in 911. The request is that a 911 communications officer receive credit for four years of experience.
So moved.
This person is certified and worked in Edward County for five years. So, have a motion by Commissioner Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 13C, job description for solid waste laborer. Joe, you want to?
Basically, what this is, we've had a person doing his job for several years. We got looking for the job description. We didn't have a job description for him. So, just to make it official and begin with the policy, this is Lawana and Greg came up and fixed the policy, job description that's attached. We just needed it approved to follow into the policy.
Can I ask that we add something to this? Sure. It talks about major duties. We kind of have it in there, but not limited to. I'd just say something about along the lines of other functions as assigned or whatever. I mean, because it's going to be hard to stay within that.
Yeah. All of them got that last catcher on the end. I noticed it wasn't on there.
So, with that changed, can I get a motion that we approve the job description for solid waste laborer?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Carter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayre. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 13D, request to bid the 2020 youth basketball uniforms. Going to get a motion that we send this out for approval?
So moved.
For bids, rather. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is FY '20 General Fund Draft Budget Review. Tara, I'll let you be more up to date on this than I am. So, I'll let you take this one.
Basically, y'all have had the budget, general fund budget for the last four or five weeks. We've had a budget meeting with any department that had a wish or want a higher than what we have come through my office. You met with those, all of those in the same night, and we didn't make any changes to the initial budget. So, the numbers you've got are good. There's been no changes made to it since your notebook was issued. And I'll run through by the departments. General government, there was an increase of $50,000, and that went into contingency. We increased contingency, because we have things come up during the year that we just don't budget for. Executive went up 2.9%. And by the way, all of these budgets has got a co-lim for the employees, and all the 5% insurance increase we had in the premium too. That's in this budget. Board of Elections went up significantly. That's because we're going to have three elections in the coming year. We didn't have elections in the past year. Finance Administration stayed the same. Law stayed the same. Data Processing went up primarily because of computer replacement in the probate office and magistrate's office. That replaced those computers. That's where the increase in that budget came from. Task Commissioners was the same, basically, it's $36 more than it was last year. And by the way, these department heads and these elected officials turned in this budget theirself. I know that didn't make the first cut in none of these budgets, okay? I put it in their hands. I said, "You tell us the easiest way to do it." They turned their budgets in, and most of them was at or below what they asked for last year. So, the tax assessment was up 0.3%. Risk management went up, and that's because our insurance rate went up, our liability insurance and insurance on the buildings. General government buildings came down. We put a roof on last year. We're not putting on this year, I hope. So, that's a $50,000 reduction. General administration fees stayed the same. Superior Court went up $10,000 because they're having more weeks of court, and Vegas salaries went up in that. Clerk of Courts was, actually went down $800 from last year's. District Attorney stayed the same. Magistrate Court went up slightly. That was insurance and COLA. Probate Court came down slightly. That's things we didn't buy last year, don't have to buy this year that we had to buy last year. Juvenile Court stayed the same. Grand Jury stayed the same. Law Library stayed the same. Public Defender went up 3.7%. Y'all approved that back in June, I think. Board of Legalization went down. That was Frankie's request. It went down $2,300 from last year. The Sheriff's went up 4.9%, and that's mostly insurance. The department with the largest amount of employees got a bigger hit on the insurance than anybody else. So, that's probably the, why that one went up that amount of money. Jail operations came down. We backed off on the amount of money. We was budgeting for housing prisoners. I hope we didn't burn ourselves, but we did. We had a trend of it going back down, so we went with that trend. Adult Corrections, that looks like it went up, she minds about. I just moved that $3,600 that month. The roads where I had it at and put them, we'll pay them straight out of that account. The number didn't change from last year. It's just moved into a different place. EMS was down slightly. The Coroner went up some. That's just because the number of cases averaged out going up. 911, which is Paul Addressing Office, that was mainly COLA and insurance. GIS, that remained the same. It's a part-time employee in a part-time position, so that didn't change. Animal Control went up slightly. That was some COLA and insurance. Merchant Management went up by 800. That was COLA and insurance. Public Works stayed the same. Road Department went up, and that's primarily insurance and COLA. Maintenance Shop came down slightly. Health Department remained the same. Defects remain the same. The seniors, that's not correct. There's actually stayed the same. It didn't drop $7,500. I don't know why that's in there. We'll go over the other budget to see if that's not correct. Transit went up because we're having more riders. Recreation went up a half percent. The Library Administration, that's not correct. I done copy something wrong. Library stayed the same as last year. 4H stayed the same. Economic Development dropped $150,000. It would move down to the other one. Did you see at the bottom, the $9,000 of the financing stuff? Most of that money went to there. We hadn't changed the way we account for the money. We pull them out of SPOLOST and run them through. So, that's where that change came in at. The rest of the Airport Authority stayed the same. Community Action stayed the same. Adult Literacy stayed the same. And the other financing went up from the money that was taken away from economic development.
Okay. That number's not right at the bottom, is it? That 113833?
Correct. That number's not right. We're going to give the other budget in there. This is revenue. You'll see the, that's the main thing. You'll see there, the digest grew enough in new growth to increase the revenue from the property taxes by $200, $167, I believe it was, $166,000. That's for the new growth after taking the rollback. The rest of the revenue stayed pretty much the same, up and down just a little bit depending on however it was going for the year's average. My machine not going to work. And again, you'll see there's very little changes in the revenue up and down over the whole revenue scheme. Anything y'all see catches your eye, and you want to go back and look at it, we'll be glad to do it. If you'll notice, there's one pretty good change, the concessions from the Reg Department, that dropped considerably because we're not having concessions anymore. It's the football games at the High School Field. Those are just miscellaneous things there. Basically, you walk back out, the revenue went from 12,26540 to 12,476790, which balances out the expenditures on the budget. There it is. The budget increased $113,833 from last year, 0.9% increase. And like I said, that includes the COLA and 5% health insurance premium increase. So, if this suits y'all, and you don't want to address anything else in the budget, what we need to do is potentially approve the draft budget so we can advertise it. Following this, it's got your tax rollback. So, that's the motion we need at some point so we can officially advertise it to say when y'all actually going to draft it.
I saw what we were proceeding.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Sayre. Any more discussion? Just so that we can go ahead and move forward with the advertising. Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Second part to this, item 13F, this is the 2019 tax year tentative millage rate, and we're looking at 5.
Yeah, we couldn't fit to that.
5.890 is a rollback? I have a question. The half a mil for EMS, is that still going to apply?
Yes, that's not, that'd still be on top of it. It'd be a total millage rate.
All right. I just didn't see it listed in here.
Just so people know, the effect of lost taxes, the 1% special tax, sales tax, it offsets our millage rate by 2.341 mils, what it would be if we done like other counties and applied it somewhere else. That's the reduction in the millage rate just because of loss.
And we use 100% of that money to roll back the millage rate?
Correct.
We don't use any of it for anything else?
No, it all goes straight in.
I was, I was, I'm sorry.
We talked about that earlier. This is a record month, $246,000.
And just so you'll know what you're looking at there, that first number is the 203 money, insurance premium money, the 1.
1,223.
63,000. That's what it is. And these numbers come from the state. I don't make them up. I go to their website and pick them up. And what they're estimating for the loss to be next year is 2.34937. But that's the form I have to fill out and send into the state along with our packet every year. And that's what the rollback looked like. Let me blow it up a little bit.
I was thinking that the loss had to be used to rollback property taxes. It don't have to be.
No, it can be specified out for special, special things. We, this, Port County's always using. You can't see that very well. All these numbers.
When that tax is first approved by the voters, the board commissioners at that time, you had to use it for a tax, a tax property tax rollback year one. But the board commissioners at that time voted to make that a permanent rollback. That said, I mean, that really can ban a future board, but all future boards follow it.
The millage rate last year was 5.961.
Yeah.
Rollback is 5.890.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Not, can I get a motion that we approve the tentative millage rate of 5.89 and move forward with advertising?
I make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayre, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Tara, I want to commend you and those department heads for doing a good job putting this together.
I'm up here talking, but the department heads and constitutional officers are on the work.
I understand. That's why I made sure, mentioned them. But good job. We appreciate your efforts as well, pulling all this together for us. Item 13G, intergovernmental agreement between Hart County, the Hart County Industrial Building Authority and the Hart County Water and Sewer Authority.
The agreement which was presented to you in your packet, it's fairly simple agreement, even though it's fairly lengthy.
even though it's fairly lengthy. It's a lawyer document. But the, just to give you the substance of it, this is what we might call the La Bonia Sewer Extension Project to Gateway and the other industrial properties at I-85. There are three areas of responsibility. And just to kind of summarize them, the Industrial Building Authority is project manager or manages this project. And it's done with grants and Economic Development splotched. The board of commissioners commits to paying for it with the Economic Development splotched allocation. And then the Water and Sewer Authority commits to owning it and operating it. And that's basically what this does. It is, it's a project that will increase the sewer capacity for all of the industrial properties up there at I-85. And it is basically just that. But the IBA manages the construction. The county uses the splotched funds for its portion. That was, by the way, that specifically is a $780,000 project. And there is an ARC grant of $600,000. And then local matching funds of $180,000. And that will be coming from the Economic Development splotch, $180,000. And then the Water Authority commits to ultimately taking ownership and operation of it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
There are three signature pages, Mr. Chairman.
One place in here says that the IBA will administer this grant.
That's right.
That's usually done local here. Is that, is that going to?
Well, yeah, that's, I'm not sure of the fineries of that. I expect it'll largely be here, though.
I know the ladies in the office, you can take care of all that, paying the bills and all that. I just wonder if that was going to change on this?
The ultimate responsibility would be that of the IBA.
We have to do a agreement with our county and stuff. So now, we'll sit in a paper trail between the IBA and us and the vendors. Even though we may write the check, we got to agree to that paper trail.
Okay. Yeah, that answered my question. Thank you.
I make a motion, we enter disagreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we enter in disagreement with IBA and the Water and Sewer Authority. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public comment section of our meeting. If somebody would like to address the board of commissioners, you'd be more than welcome to come to the podium. Anybody for public comment? Nobody for public comment? Can I get a motion that we go into executive session personally on litigation?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.